Good evening, welcome. Thank you for joining us. This is the Marion City Council meeting for Thursday, February 20th, 2020. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. We have the roll call, please.
Ms. Atkins?
Here.
Mr. Jensen?
Here.
Mayor Abou Osley?
Here.
Mr. Brandt?
Here.
Ms. Goodell, yeah?
Here.
Mr. Sternad?
President. Thank you. Thank you. First on our agenda this evening is a proclamation for the League of Women Voters honoring the 100th birthday of the organization. We have Jean McMenham in here to accept the proclamation. Would you come up front? Of course, we're very grateful for the League, for everything they do, the forums for elections, as well as the annual State of the City luncheons and everything else that they do in the community. So, the proclamation reads, "Whereas 100 years ago, the League of Women Voters, a nonpartisan civic organization, was created just six months before the final passage of the 19th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution granting women the right to vote. And whereas the League of Women Voters have worked since 1920 to improve our system of government and assure that eligible women and men are registered to vote. And whereas the League of Women Voters of Lynn County serve the citizens of Marion by providing information on candidate issues and by furnishing a nonpartisan platform from which all school board, state, county, mayor, and city council candidates may be seen and heard. And whereas the League of Women Voters of Lynn County, including both female and male members, collaborates with other organizations to achieve voter education, increase civic participation, voting, and create lasting change in the community and make democracy work. Now therefore, I Nicholas Abou Osley, Mayor of the City of Marion, Iowa, do hereby recognize the 100th anniversary of the League of Women Voters in the City of Marion and encourage residents to pay tribute and respect to the League of Women Voters for all they do to make our community informed, vibrant, and strong."
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I'd like to say thank you to everyone. Men and women are open for membership, so I've got membership forms if anybody would like them today. And I'd also like to thank the city for being so cooperative and helpful in planning the State of the City Marion, particularly, a plug for Amber. She is fabulous to work with. So, I'd like to say thank you, and we look forward to continuing that.
Okay, under presentations this evening, we have Brent Olson, Lynn County Supervisor, who's here to make a presentation.
Good evening, Marion City Council. I just wanted two minutes of your time. I handed out the 2019 Popular Annual Financial Report. We put that together each year as something that we give to our citizens to go over what we did with last year's tax askings, how we generally spent them and put them to work, and then kind of illustrate some of the initiatives from the different departments and the other elected officials from the sheriff and the auditor and the treasurer's office, the recorder's office. So, I submit that to you for your review. We, like you, just completed our budget for the next fiscal year. We will have a public hearing on March 4th. Our budget will be approximately $151 million, and that represents about 16 percent of a Marion citizen's homeowner's property taxes on their statement. Generally, for the last two years, we've had a levy rate which was significantly lower than it was in years past. It was at $5.85, and that was because we spent down some of the mental health surplus dollars, and we put a great deal of that into reducing the levy and then also investing in some mental health assets. This year, so if you normalize that, we're usually in the $6.24 range. This year, we'll be at $6.40. That surplus is done, and we're adding some debt service. That comes primarily from three different investments. One is an access center that is for people in mental health crisis, also maybe diverting people away from hospitals or jails with regard to public intoxication and other things that would be able to divert away from that. The second investment was the Harris Building. That is a new public health and youth and child development center. It was a $32 million investment that we needed to make. We have a AAA bond rating, very low interest rates, and I think building that now with those dollars will prove to save a lot of money over time. And then the third one is the conservation bond. As you know, several years ago, voters were asked to approve a $40 million bond to be spent over the next 20 years, over the 20-year period. About a third of that has come online, and so that is reflected also in the general levy. Just one thing that I wanted to make you aware of that might affect your constituents this next year, and will affect me greatly as well, is the closure of County Home Road. We'll be putting in two roundabouts, one at C Avenue where the soccer fields are and one at Al Burnett. So, that's going to affect a lot of commuter traffic, I know, in Marion and then Northern Lynn County. Tonight, Jared Kelly, our road superintendent, and our new county engineer, Brad Kettles, is here, and they can answer any questions with regard to that or any other questions you might have with regard to our investment in the roads, especially those that lead directly into Marion that are under secondary roads department. I know I've had some questions about where the new school's going on 35th and if we plan to do anything or if you do, and so I'm a little unclear maybe, and Brad can answer that question, but if you do have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them now, and I'll be here after the meeting.
Thank you. Appreciate you all coming. Anyone have questions for Supervisor Olson? Yes, go ahead.
I do about the roundabouts. I don't know, maybe Brent can answer. They're kind of easy. I'm just curious if the speed limits will change and how long we'll be at a commission.
And the one thing I'll say before Brad gets up here is that the number one question I've been asked is, it's not going to be like the one at 29th Street, which I am fine with. I use it every single day, but they're going to be quite a bit larger.
Hello, I'm Brad Kettles, the Lynn County Engineer, and I'm sorry, what were your questions regarding?
If the speed limit is going to change after the installation of the two roundabouts, and how long will the road be down for?
Right. So, currently County Home Road is 55, and going into the roundabouts, I believe it goes to 35, or 25 or 35, but obviously, once you get into the roundabouts, you're going to have to decrease the speed. And the roundabouts are, both of the roundabouts are, so one is at Al Burnett Road and County Home Road, and the other is at C Avenue Extension and County Home Road, and they're both shifted to the south. And as you enter the roundabouts, they will be a single lane roundabout, so you will kind of, you won't come into them straight, so you'll kind of come into it with a curve, which will generally slow the traffic down as well.
Will you, since you're having to close the road, are you going to construct them simultaneously, then? Just rip the Band-Aid off and get all the paint out?
Right. That is usually my approach, but yeah. The project was actually just led earlier this week on Tuesday, so we have not had contact with the contractor, but they are required to construct those roundabouts one at a time, so they can't have them both closed at the same time. And the project will be staged, because the paving goes from just east of North Center Point Road, almost all the way to our shop, I'll buy the landfill as well, so that's going to be concrete paving as well.
Oh, wow.
And every, every street going south off of County Home Road, there will be turn lanes, so Robbins, even in Winslow, Lou Corr, those will all have turn lanes off of County Home Road to the south as well, so.
And then can you just speak to the timeline of when you anticipate everything starting and concluding?
I believe the late start date on the project is in April, so they will start on it here shortly.
Okay.
And, yeah, hopefully before snow starts flying again is the goal, right? So, it's going to take all summer, for sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, I'm sitting here thinking about the roundabouts and where all that extra traffic's going to go and how it's going to detour
Right.
around those intersections. So, I mean, I think it'll be really nice when they're done.
Right.
But I'm trying to envision where all those, where all that traffic's going to go and...
Right. We do, in the plans, we do have staging plans and detours, but typically, the contractor has ideas of their own as well, so we'll meet with them, and if they have better approaches and, but yeah, communication's going to be key for this project.
And this will all be published in the paper and online and all of that as soon as you have all of that information?
For sure. Our website, and we do have a notification system on our website called Notify Me that you can sign up for various projects, and obviously, that will be, yeah, one of them. You'll get daily updates on the project, so.
Okay.
Yes?
I'm sorry, which one will be done first? Do you know if it'll be the east one or the west one?
Not sure yet.
Undetermined, okay.
Yeah, we'll know, I don't think we can contact the contractor until the contractor signs, so usually, that takes two to three weeks, so. But we'll be having a preconstruction meeting with them shortly, and...
And so I'm assuming there will be dedicated detour signs posted, which will put a lot of that traffic through the Hunter's Ridge area of Marion
Right.
off of Winslow, I'm assuming, or Lou Corr over in that area? Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So, one of the things that we, we have a meeting scheduled, but once we have all that information, we had actually planned to approach the Gazette and some of the news channels to do a whole kind of spread, you know, and push to inform the public, because I know that my phone's going to ring off the hook because of the did with Mount Vernon Road when we had to close that, and this has substantially more traffic than Mount Vernon Road.
Okay. Thanks for the information. Thank you again for coming. Okay, at this time, we have a public forum. This is a section in our, on our agenda, which is open for comments from the public on any topic that's listed on the agenda but not associated with a public hearing. If anyone's here to address the council on any item that's on the agenda but not part of a public hearing, whether it will be separate comment opportunities, please come forward Okay. Seeing that there are none, we will move forward with our consent agenda.
Mayor, at this time, I'd like to move to approve the consent agenda as follows. This will be items A1 through C1, including Resolution Number 28275.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented, including items A1 through C1 and Resolution 28275. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. For the next portion of the agenda, I will turn over the gavel to Mayor Protem.
Your Honor, I move to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abou Osley's abstention from voting, Resolution Number 28276.
Second.
Let's go ahead and have the reading for that resolution, please.
Approving partial payment number one to Alliant Energy regarding the Royal Oak Ridge Drive Light Poles in the amount of $801.69.
And you want to second that since, after the reading?
Sure, I'll second that again.
Thank you. Okay, so we got a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 28276. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes with one abstention. I'll move the gavel back to the mayor.
Thank you. You're next.
Oh, I'd like to make a motion directing staff to publish notice of intent to fill council member-at-large vacancy by appointment.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to direct staff to publish notice of intent to fill council member-at-large vacancy by appointment. Discussion? Yes, ma'am. Ms. Goodell?
Yeah, Tuesday, I mentioned that I wanted to have the council consider a couple of changes to the process, and I spoke with Rachel the other day and shared those with her, and I just thought I would share them with everyone. The first was that we just make sure that we're rotating the question-answers with the questions. I felt like the last time it was done, and maybe in times past, whoever goes first always goes first, and then always goes second. I think it just gives an unfair advantage in different ways. And then the second thing I'd like everyone to consider is to move into a closed session when we're voting. I feel like we should be able to confer with one another. I think it looks good if we have some consensus in the back and come out and put someone forth that doesn't, it's not necessarily a split vote, maybe it starts that way, but it's something that I've done before in a different state, and I didn't know if it was legal here or not, and I asked Rachel to check with legal, so I think we're about to get that answer.
Yes, it would not be permitted under Iowa Code Chapter 21.
Wow.
It would not. No, if you were going to discuss appointments, you could only discuss them, you could not come to a consensus or make a decision behind closed doors. That would have to be done in open session. And also, every person who is a candidate for the appointment would have to make the request ahead of time to go into closed session.
Oh, they would need to be in there with us.
No, they would need to request that you discuss it in closed session. It can only be done at their request. So, if one person requested and one person didn't, then you could only talk about the person who did, so you...
Right, and that's obviously not fair. Okay, well, you can only try.
But nothing precludes discussion in the meeting.
No, you can absolutely discuss it openly, and even to go into the closed session if they requested it, there's the added requirement that it would have to be prejudicial or harmful to their reputation to talk about them in the open session.
Sure, and I'm not intimating that that's what we would be doing at all. It's more that if we're going to put someone up here for almost two years, that it has the confidence of, you know, of the full council after discussion, so at any rate, okay, I just thought...
Yes, all final decisions and all, like, ultimate decisions like that have to be made, and the votes have to be done in open session.
Okay. Thanks for looking into that.
Thank you.
That's all I had.
Okay.
Thanks.
Any other discussion, comments? Okay, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion directing staff to publish notice of intent to fill the council member-at-large vacancy by appointment, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. At this time, we have a public hearing regarding proposed fiscal year 2021 city maximum property tax, it says tax dollars, tax levy? Or tax dollars?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm not sure how well this is going to show up, but I wanted to put it up there to show the council and the public exactly what the form looks like that we have to use to do this. This public hearing is a new step that was added to the budget approval process by the Iowa Legislature last year, so this is the first time through it for any unit of local government that has to publish notice about our maximum property taxes that the city could potentially ask for. One thing that I would note is that this is not the same as the budget hearing, because the budget hearing considers the entire budget. So, you have property taxes, you have all those other fees for services that go into the general fund, you have the proprietary funds, you have the capital projects funds, all of that will be covered when we get to the point where we're doing the budget hearing. So, this is a separate one that just focuses exclusively on the property tax asking that we would be putting in front of the public. So, there's a couple of columns on it. You have the current year certified property tax, and then the second column is intended to show what would happen to the tax rate if the property tax asking in dollar terms did not change. And then the last one shows what it looks like if we move forward with what was included in the draft budget, plus some contingencies, as we had discussed with the city council, to provide some flexibility in case of pending legislative action. So, for a growing community like Marion, since this focuses on the property tax dollars collected and not necessarily on how much the community grows, our property tax asking grew in, well in excess of the 2 percent that kicks in the requirement for us to hold this public hearing. For any growing community, you can pretty well virtually guarantee that that is probably going to happen, just because you're adding new tax base every year, so your dollar amount is going to grow with the new tax base that you have. You'd have to have a fairly flat year for a growing community to not exceed that 2 percent number. So, overall, the way the publication was put together, the property tax asking last year, or the current year, would be at 12:03, and we had published it at 12:29. Moving forward, the city council will hold then the full budget hearing in March, and then subsequently approve the budget. As we've talked about before, you have the opportunity after that hearing to be able to scale back on any expenses, any rates, any charges. You simply cannot increase any of those after the notification for the budget hearing goes into the paper. So, just wanted to see if the council had any additional questions. As I had pointed out yesterday, or on Tuesday, there is a little idiosyncrasy with the way the state put the form together, in that it does not include things like the debt service levy. In the case of Marion, it also does not include any what they consider to be a voter-approved general fund levy. So, in Marion's case, that would be the library levy at four cents per thousand is not included in this publication as well. And looking at it, council had asked about whether or not we could do anything to clarify it. There's not a spot that we can put it into the chart that shows what the tax rate looks like, but looking at what is included for the explanation of significant increases in the budget, I think we can probably add a clarifying sentence there, just to hopefully provide the public a little bit more notice that the 12:29 is not what would actually show up on the tax bill, because those other levies have to be added into the total levy.
Okay, so we'll, we'll hold questions for the city manager until we get to the actual motion on the, on the resolution, but right now, we're in the public hearing, so after that explanation, the floor is now open for anyone to address the council, whether in favor or in opposition of this measure. Please come forward. Okay, seeing that no one is coming forward, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll move on to the resolution. And I just want to ask if any comments have been received outside the meeting on this measure?
Not by my office.
Not by staff? Okay.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 28277, approving the maximum property tax dollars from certain levies for the proposed fiscal year 2020 to 2021 budget.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 28277, approving the maximum property tax dollars from certain levies for the proposed fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget. Discussion? Now, if anyone has questions for Lon, this would be the time to ask for any comments? Okay. All those in favor of Resolution Number 28277, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve Resolution Number 28278, setting date of public hearing for March 19th, 2020, regarding the proposed fiscal year 2021 budget.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 28278, setting the date of the public hearing for March 19th, 2020, for the proposed fiscal year 2021 budget. All those in favor of Resolution Number 28278, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance Number 20-01, amending Chapter 122 of the Code of Ordinances relating to solicitors, peddlers, and transient merchants. This will be a second consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the second consideration of Ordinance Number 20-01, amending Chapter 122 of the Code of Ordinances relating to solicitors, peddlers, and transient merchants. All those in favor of Ordinance Number 20-01, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve Ordinance Number 20-02, amending Chapter 7.05 of the Code of Ordinances relating to operating budget preparation. This is a second consideration.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve Ordinance Number 20-02, amending Chapter 7.05 of the Code of Ordinances relating to the operating budget preparation. Second consideration, discussion. All those in favor of Ordinance Number 20-02, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion's approved.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 28279 relating to the establishment of the Local Option Sales Tax Oversight Committee.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 28279 relating to the establishment of the Local Option Sales Tax Oversight Committee. Discussion?
Yeah, and I guess I just want a clarification, are we, I didn't see any documentation as to an amended version of that, is that, what changes now are we approving here?
The number was changed to five.
It was?
Yeah, per council discussion.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Based on the consensus from Tuesday, so the resolution would be establishing the committee at five members and once-a-year meetings, and additional special meetings at the discretion of the chair. Is that correct? Okay. Further discussion on this item? All those in favor of approving Resolution Number 28279, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion's approved. Mr. Brandt?
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 28280, approving the award of $10,000 to Willis Dady Emergency Shelter, $5,000 to Marion Cares, and $5,000 to Four Oaks Family and Children's Services as part of the Civil Rights Commission Low and Moderate Income Housing Assistance Grant.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 28280, approving the award of $10,000 to Willis Dady Emergency Shelter, $5,000 to Marion Cares, and $5,000 to Four Oaks Family and Children's Services as part of the Civil Rights Commission's Low and Moderate Income Housing Assistance Grant Program. All those in favor of Resolution Number 28280, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion's approved.
Mayor, I move to approve...
Don't mean to interrupt. I need to turn the gavel over on this next item to the Mayor Protem. Okay, thank you, sorry.
No problem. Mayor Protem, I move to approve Resolution Number 28281, approving memorandum of understanding to amend the development agreement with PDS Investments LLC.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 28281. Is there any discussion? Go ahead.
So, Lon, we're doing this partially for Medco to move over there. What if that transaction does not go through and Medco does not move over there? Is there anything in there that stipulates that this would not go through if that transaction doesn't happen?
There's a couple of pieces that we have to provide some security that that will happen. One is that this is only the memorandum of understanding, so to actually cement it, we have to hold, we have to amend the urban renewal plan, then we have to do another public hearing to actually amend the development... public hearing to actually amend the development agreement. By the time we do that, Medco should be done with everything that they would need to do, so we wouldn't actually cement it into the development agreement until we know that the project is actually well underway.
Okay, when is, do you know when the due diligence time?
I don't know when their due diligence period runs out, but I know that their board is meeting next week to make decisions.
All right, thank you.
If I recall, I think Nick referred to the due diligence period being in March, so that should be coming up fairly soon, yeah. Any further discussion on this resolution? All those in favor of Resolution 28281, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, opposed, those opposed say no. Motion, the resolution is approved with one abstention. I'll pass the gavel back.
Mayor, I move to receive and file, discuss, and approve the Engineering Department Work Program.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to receive, file, discuss, and approve the Engineering Department Work Program. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion's approved.
Mayor, I move to approve project calendar regarding the 2020 A Avenue Reconstruction Project as follows, including Resolutions 28282 to 28284.
Second. It's been moved by Councilmember Atkins, seconded by Councilmember Goodela, to approve the project calendar regarding the 2020 A Avenue Reconstruction Project, including Resolutions 28282 through 28284. All those in favor of approving the project calendar for the A Avenue Reconstruction Project, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion's approved.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to remove from table Resolution Number 28240, approving an encroachment agreement for a sign located in the city right-of-way associated with Collins Road Square located at 1392 Twixtown Road.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve, to remove from the table Resolution Number 28240, approving the encroachment agreement for a sign located in the city right-of-way associated with Collins Road Square located at 1392 Twixtown Road. Discussion. All those in favor of the motion to remove Resolution 28240 from the table, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 28240, approving an encroachment agreement for a sign located in city right-of-way associated with Collins Road Square located at 1392 Twixtown Road that was tabled 123, 2020.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Brandt, seconded by Councilmember Goodela, to approve Resolution Number 28240, approving the encroachment agreement for a sign located in the right-of-way associated with Collins Road Square located at 1392 Twixtown Road. Discussion. All those in favor of Resolution Number 28240, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved. This time we have another public hearing regarding an amendment to Section 176.41 of the Marion Code of Ordinances relating to notification signs for zoning amendments. The public hearing is open. Mr. Hockett, are you going to do a brief?
This is just an amendment to the process in terms of notification for zoning map updates. With the citywide zoning coming up, the code requires signs on every property. We were just looking at an option when we're doing larger rezonings that encompass a lot of properties, to allow the option for us, instead of putting signs on every property, to place notification at three public buildings, likely City Hall, Library, Lough Park, or some combination thereof, per the same requirements that a sign is required. We still do the notice in the paper, so there's, in the website. So this just gives us an option to address those large, multiple parcel rezoning requests. This action, if we chose, choose to go that way, we do have to get permission from the Planning and Zoning Commission to allow us to do that, so we just can't. So staff couldn't abuse it if there's concern about that, so.
Right. And there's still the mailings to all the effect?
There will not be, well, there will be mailings if it's a smaller parcel, but with the whole citywide, we won't be doing a mailing of every parcel on town, unfortunately. So this is the solution we came up with and kind of ran it through legal, and they were okay with that.
At this time, the floor is open for anyone wishing to address the council, whether in favor or in opposition of this measure. Please come forward. Okay, seeing that no one's coming forward, we'll close the public hearing. We'll ask if any comments have been received outside the meeting on this measure.
We've not received any.
Okay. Please note that for the record.
Your honor, I move to approve Ordinance Number 20-03, amending Section 176.41 of the Marion Code of Ordinances related to notification signs for zoning amendments. This is the initial consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Ordinance Number 20-03, amending Section 176.41 of the Marion Code of Ordinances related to notification signs for zoning amendments. Discussion.
Want to clarify?
Yes, Ms. Goodela.
I thought on Tuesday, Tom had mentioned that there would be signs put in on like the major corners of a development, on the entrances, and that's going to happen too.
Yeah, in that situation, if we were looking at like a 40-lot county subdivision that was coming in, we'd hate to put 40 signs out. So in a county subdivision of like 40 acre, 40 lots, we would do them at the entrances and exits to the development. For like a citywide zoning, it's impossible. So we would use the signs as much as we can, and not, we're not trying to avoid it, but I think the only time you'll never see a signs go up is when it's high beyond, you know, when it's the whole city.
Right.
Which hopefully we don't do again for another 20 years. So yeah, large county subdivisions would probably be the only time we just focus on just like the entrances and exits.
Okay.
Otherwise, we do a pretty good job of signing every road frontage on.
Maybe I'll rephrase my question. This doesn't change whatever you're required to do now for mailing notices, this doesn't change?
No, this doesn't change this at all.
Okay. I just wanted that to be clear.
I'm good.
Okay, other questions or discussion? All those in favor of Ordinance Number 20-03, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved. At this time, we have an update regarding the library building project. Library director is here, welcome.
Good evening, your honor and council. I have to admit, as I get this going, I'm a little nervous. I feel like this is the library's coming-out party tonight. If you guys all know what that means, let's make sure this comes up. We have been working really hard to get to this point. Rachel, we practice in everything. Does that help the nerves? What is happening? Oh, I fixed it all by myself. Did y'all see that? Okay, so, thank you. So I'll ask a little bit for the council tonight and for the rest of staff, just a little bit of indulgence, as this is the first time we've really done a full presentation on the library project for the public. I was intentional about doing this tonight and what we included, so I'd like to do a little bit of a recap of how we got to this point. I've been sharing this presentation with our board and putting a few things in there, so I always want to remind folks why we're continuing to invest in libraries, in case anyone's wondering. We have a new Gallup poll that was just released at the end of 2019 that's circulating on my Facebook page and LinkedIn and all my social media, which is that library visits outpaced every other cultural event that happened nationwide in 2019. We outpaced citizens going to the movies, going to art museums, going to any type of theatrical event, and we even like to say, in some cases, sporting events. So library visits are up and continue to be on the rise and outpacing any other type of community event that is happening. So we also find that to be very much the case in Marion, and I'd like to put some statistics up for you guys to see, and I'm sorry this is a little bit small for everyone on the monitors, I'm going to read it as well, but this is not to be competing with our partners or the other libraries in the state, but really just to show you how much our community values library service. We have, up until two days ago, been telling everybody that we are the sixth busiest library in the state, and we're very excited to share that we have moved up, and we are now at the fifth busiest library in the state. So when we talk about what does busy mean for libraries, that means circulation. So you can see that we are right up there with our top cities in population. We are contenders as far as how we're compared with Iowa City, Des Moines, Ames, Cedar Rapids, and then there we are, Marion, fifth in the state for circulation. Also, since our supervisor Olson is here tonight, I would just like to thank Lynn County as well as Marion for the support that we get from our county supervisors. They've been very gracious in continuing to invest in libraries as well. And for the first time this year, the Marion Public Library outpaced all 11 Lynn County libraries in service to Lynn Counties. What that means is that we circulate more to the Lynn County residents than any of the other 11 county libraries. So again, that's another pacing step that we made this year. And a really interesting stat, again, partners with Cedar Rapids not showing this to compete, but just to let you know how much our residents use the library. Our Marion, the circulation per capita in Marion is more than two times the circulation per capita in Cedar Rapids, and they have two libraries. So what that means is that Cedar Rapids has a lot of people coming into their library, but they're not all citizens of the city of Cedar Rapids, so they're certainly busy, not say they're not, but this just shows how much our residents use our library, which is pretty cool for us. Just as a reminder to everyone how we came to this point, back in early FY19 or early calendar year 19, back in January, we presented our new space needs assessment to the city council and library board. We looked at four different options. I want to stress this, we have a lot of questions about how we came to the decisions that we came to. We looked at one big old library that we would put somewhere in Marion, we looked at having two branches, we looked at even having three branches. Based on the performance score and the cost and the value to our citizens, we landed on a 52,000 square foot main library and a mobile library branch. This is what we're moving forward with. We are a little ambitious in the fact that we plan to roll these two things out simultaneously. Timing, hopefully we'll get the mobile library going before the bricks and mortar building. Having a bricks and mortar building in Uptown Marion was very important to our library board. They felt very strongly that we wanted to stay in Uptown. We know that we are one of the top drivers of traffic to Uptown. We hope to be a good neighbor and steward with our other Uptown partners as well. But we also know that the community's growing, and we wanted to make sure that via our mobile branch, we're going to be able to hit all of the different areas of our communities. As we continue to grow and kind of continue to grow to the north, we understand that there are opportunities to partner with some of our other libraries and the county libraries to imagine what service is going to look about in different parts of our city and the county. And so we are thinking forward to growth and how we can do that, but as far as the city's investment in the library and what we want to provide for our residents, we feel like this is a very good, solid 30-year plan with some plans on the back burner for what that expansion would look like several years down the road. So this, just a little bit more about that needs assessment that we completed. It talks about impactful service, flexibility, and adaptability, and we wanted to really maintain that synergy at City Square Park and the Uptown, as I talked about. We reinforce the vitality of Uptown and what we're trying to create here, and then our surrounding neighborhoods and the schools and those types of things bring in that value as well. So where are we? We, as you all know, you all approved our $18 million budget, subject to reverse referendum. I'm very excited and cautiously optimistic, not trying to count my chickens before they hatch, but tomorrow is the deadline for the reverse referendum, and to date, we have had no action. So we've got a few more hours here before we really celebrate, but we're feeling really good and thankful again to the council for the decision that you made to support the library. A little bit of the breakdown in the library here, we have $5 million allocated and lost, your $7 million geo-bond commitment, our sale of the existing site, and then the capital campaign makes up our $18 million budget. We have our signed contract with the architect, we have our signed contract with our construction manager. I'm going to give you an update in just a minute on budget and where we are in that process. We completed a feasibility study and signed a contract with Ambridge, who will be leading our capital campaign, and our capital campaign has kicked off. I do want you to know that this will be the last time that you hear me talk about the capital campaign openly, because we are in the silent phase of the capital campaign, and we have strict orders from our consultant that we will not talk much more about it outside of that. Expect a lot more to come either in private conversations about the campaign, or in three to four months, we'll have a kickoff for our public side of the campaign. So here is, just to reorient everyone where we're going to be, so we are into this lot here in between the current library space and City Hall. We have the library positioned as close as we can to Sixth, with parking in the back. You see that we have envisioned right now about 65 parking spaces on the property proper, I guess I would say. There is street parking on the front side of the library that we hope to be accessible parking, and there is street parking around the library as well. We have been, although we're just going to focus on this lot in this presentation, we have been working with the city and envisioning what the whole parking situation may look like on that side of Sixth Avenue once the development or the redevelopment of our existing site may take place. We know that over on the City Hall, with our adjacency to City Hall now on the weekends, if there's big events or anything like that, we have the overflow parking in the City Hall that will help with some of that. So we're really keeping a close eye on what's going to happen with the rest of development in Uptown, but we do know that we've already expanded the parking that we currently have, and we feel really good about that. Questions about just this positioning? I will point out, because I'm not sure that it's super visible on additional sites, you do see a little indication here of the bookmobile. This is just a loading and unloading zone on that south side for the bookmobile. We do plan to store the bookmobile off-site in the fleet area. We'll be talking and working with Mr. Miller, more on that as we continue down that path. We do have a book drop, like we do now at our library, but a new feature that we're adding is a drop-off window or a pickup window. So if you're a mom and your kiddos have fallen asleep in the backseat and you can't get out, you don't want to disturb them, you can pull up to the window and pick up your holds, or if it's snowing or raining and you just don't want to get out of your car, you will have drive-up window service at the library now. So the project budget, this is a breakdown that we've seen before, just quickly go over with you. This is the architect's estimate of the budget, the building, the site, the furnishings, the technology, all of our fees and expenses bring us to that $18 million. The next one just shows the breakdown of the building. These slides are generally in here for folks that we are going to for grants, the hulprines of the world want to see the detailed building breakdown costs. You've all seen that before, but that is here as well. And now we get to see pretty pictures. We're very excited. So this is a early rendering of what the library would look like from the corner of Sixth and Eleventh. I will tell you that this is very early. All feedback and opinions are welcome at this point. This is a starting point. I will say that we've been through some charrettes. This aligns with the charrettes that were done on this project previously. We did some work with our steering committee leading up until this point. I'm very humbled and proud to say that Mr. Draper had a chance to take a look at these pictures from a historical perspective as well. So we've shown these around in our process, and we have gotten a lot of positive feedback. One of the- I'm very humbled and proud to say that Mr. Draper had a chance to take a look at these pictures from a historical perspective as well. So, we've shown these around in our process, and we have gotten a lot of positive feedback. One of the areas that we're working on right now, and I don't think my pointer works for you guys, but this end part that kind of is our entryway, this little square thing that's over the edge is one of the parts that folks are not really connecting with. And so, we think that that may be an area that might change. They feel like that entryway looks a little 70s, it's been a little bit of the feedback that we've gotten. So, we're looking to kind of soften that up a little bit, the architects are gonna be working on that. You are looking at on that corner, a roof patio or a deck patio that's gonna look out over the park with a fireplace and be a really nice gathering outdoor area there. Right now, it's scheduled to hold about 100 people. We could have weddings there, there could be different kinds of uses for that space. We hope to do outdoor art classes, but really trying to bring, in Mr. Trey Harn's words, that biophilic, the inside-outside workings with this building as well. So, a lot of greenery outside, a lot of things to kind of soften up that building. This is the look from north of Sixth, so if we were standing maybe on top of the Marion Square Mall right now. Again, this is preliminary, we just talked about this a little bit today. Our goal is to try to make this look a little bit like a Main Street, so that it sort of looks like, there's a little undulation there where it looks like it could be a different storefront as you're walking down the street. So, again, this is very preliminary, not a final design, but again, what we would look like from Sixth Avenue. This is the look from 11th, so if you were standing in our current library looking over across 11th, this is assuming that we keep 11th Street open. That's a topic for further discussion. One of the things that we're really hoping to do is these windows that face out to 11th would be doors, so we could have again, some indoor-outdoor space flowing in. Let's say there's a farmer's market or something going on uptown, we could have lots of different flowing in and out of the library in our warm and seasonal months. Questions or comments about these pictures?
Go ahead.
I love the brick, what's the other material?
It's metal.
Okay, thank you.
I'll be making sure you all have a copy of this to float around to, to get some feedback. Okay, no other comments about that outside, we'll go to the inside. This is very tiny and a work in progress. The big takeaway that I want you all to get from this is that the majority of the first floor will be our children's area. We are doing a little bit of a mix in that we want there to be immediate access to things that our patrons want to get to quickly, things like magazines, newspapers, large prints, pick-up-your-holds. The hot items will be in these little area up on the top left of the screen. That'll be the things, those are the things that you see when you first come in the door. There's also a fireplace concept included down there, just, we have this vision of folks coming in and gathering around a fire in the cold months to talk and gather and change shories or read, whatever they'd like to do. But, this area all the way over, the majority of this floor is our children's area. The top right-hand corner there is an active zone, so think about the library version of a playplace in a mall. We'll have that in here. We see this as a place where families, moms, grandparents, whoever with their kiddos could come and stay the whole day inside the library and have an active place in Uptown to engage. A lot of active learning, a lot of hands-on learning here, so we're really excited about that. Bottom left-hand corner is our multipurpose space. The space is gonna hold anywhere from 250 to 300 people depending on the layout of the room. So, this is major event space. We're also planning this where it can open up a little bit more. This is space that we will make available to the public for events. This will be rentable space, this will be revenue generating space for us if it's after hours. Down on the bottom of that room is a demonstration kitchen. This is going to be an industrial-sized kitchen. I think I may have even joked with the mayor at one point that we'll have him make us a Lebanese dinner in there, but we really want that. So, think of this as more congregate meals, where we have cultural events, where we invite different cultures to come in and cook meals together and share their culture. This is also where we could do, maybe partner, this is maybe, this is not fact, partner with folks like Kirkwood and Hy-Vee and some of our other cooking culinary partners to come in and do classes, different programs for us. This is also where we serve our encore congregate meals. This is also where we'll serve our summer meals that we serve to kiddos in the summer that come to the library to get their lunch. Staff space on that bottom side, we'll be close to the book drop and all of that stuff, much like we are today. And then, the second floor is kind of my favorite, it is my favorite, not that the first floor is very exciting. The adult section is gonna be here to the west side, adults get the primo access to our porch. There will be windows that open up and outlook over that porch. I'm hoping that some of that can be opened, so some doors that can open out there again, so we can have that fresh air in the seasonal months that will allow for that. And then, the majority of our adult collection there will be on the west side. On the far east side of the building is the teen section, and it was so fun today, you guys. We had our architects were in town and we went over to do a tour of the library, and we went into our current community room, and there were probably 45 teenagers in there doing karaoke, so they were singing their guts out. And then, some of them were making food, they had a food station, and they were making some sort of food in their cooking club, and then a whole nother group of them were doing crafts, and it was just a mess, and we loved it, and they're gonna start doing that up there. It's a much better space for them, it's gonna be soundproof, but it'll allow them to have that space to do all of that creating and everything that they wanna do. But then, there's also space outside of that area for our older teens or younger teens that may not wanna participate in that. They'll still have plenty of space to hang out, do their homework, work on computers, that type of thing. And then, in the middle of that, between adults and the teen area is my favorite area, I'm just gonna call it the intergenerational space. This is a space that we want everyone to use and a space that we're really hoping that our different age groups will come together and create and learn. This is before, you all have heard me talk about our women's group that brings their sewing machines in, and they sew quilts. I want them to do it right there, right smack in the middle of that area, so they can invite all those teenagers to come over and they can start showing them how to sew, or at least bringing them into what they're doing. Also, in that area, we have a green room where you can make videos. We have entrepreneurs that need to make commercials, do commercials or YouTube videos or different things like that. We have our students that have to do video projects for school. There's also gonna be a recording studio in there, so for me and for this community, oral history projects are things that we really wanna get into, but we also have a lot of folks that are doing podcasting and learning how to podcast, so those rooms will be there. Behind that, we have a little bit more of a clean room space or a maker space, which will be more industrial in that you can paint and do a lot of messy stuff back there. So, very flexible space for us to use for that intergenerational bring of folks together, making, creating art, all the things that we are proud to be about in Marion. My office is up there, some of the administrative folks will be on the second floor as well, so we'll have staff split on both levels. Any questions about this floor plan so far?
I do.
Yes, Ms. Caddella.
And I guess it's about the overall. One thing I've never asked is, are there any security measures built in, any cameras or anything at the entrance or for the drive-through?
Yes, absolutely. We have cameras now, and we will have cameras in this building as well. All the staff areas will be, we plan to have entrances with key cards, and so all of our staff areas will be key-carded. And then, the staff area on the first floor in the back is also our storm shelter area, so that's a reinforced room for anybody in the library could come into if there was a storm.
And so, if people were using the recording studio or the green screen room, or wherever there's more technical equipment, that's a bit expensive, do they have to be let in? Do they check?
They will. They will have to check in, and we'll actually have staff in that area as well. I can't really do my pointer here, but there's this staff station that'll be right outside that door, or right outside that room. Okay, so that was all the exciting stuff, now we have to talk about the money. So, here's, we feel really excited about where we are. We have just completed the schematic design phase, so I wanna explain these numbers before we get too scared. So, in the schematic design phase, what we've just gone through, that is, we're gonna throw everything in in the kitchen sink. We're shooting for the moon, we want all the fancy stuff, like, let's not worry about how much anything costs, we're not worried about fancy finishes, we're just gonna dream. And so, we did that, so the architect's estimate was $18,500, and our schematic design estimate came in at $18,750. So, we felt really good about that, especially because they just had schematic drawings. I mean, they don't even have actual mechanical drawings, they don't have actual plumbing, they don't have anything. So, where that seems like a big dollar amount, really for a schematic design phase, that's really good. We were expecting it to be like $2 million over, and so, we were really excited when this came in here. It's gonna look so much better here in just a minute, I promise. We did move a couple of things into alternates. The two things that you're seeing there is an alternate. When I talk about our demonstration kitchen, you can go like full-on industrial, like Iron Chef, big fancy stuff, or you can do a hodgepodge of that, and we decided to do a hodgepodge. So, let's start out with what we know we can afford and handle, and if we do find some money somewhere, we can add on a little bit to that later on. So, we moved that down to the alternate. And then, the recording studio, our architect had planned for, there's some prefab recording studios that you can just buy and stick in a wall, and it's like super soundproofed and it's all prefabbed. There's about a $22,000 price tag with that. We believe, or our construction manager believes, they can also build that and not have to spend that $22,000, so we're also gonna leave that as an alternate. If we are able to find some money after the detailed design phase, that's something we could always bring back in, but we decided to kind of move that out for now. So, we're moving into the detailed design phase, and so what we have and what we're concentrating on in the detailed design phase are these cost reduction strategies. So, as the construction manager and the architect, and we all got together in a room after the schematic design phase and really sharpened our pencils and said, okay, let's look at this in some of those areas where we think that going into detailed design, we will be able to cut some of that cost out. And so, these are some of those areas. I won't go into it too detailed, because it's, even in detail, it's still high level, but mechanical and electrical, there's some things that we can do with our interior design and our finishes, exterior enclosures, and then, some of the landscape reductions as we're working with our city partners and understanding what we need to do there. So, even more exciting is that we feel very confident even going into this next phase that we're immediately gonna be able to have about $667,000 of savings, which then brings us to something that looks a lot better, which is where, this is the summary that, you know, kind of going into this detailed design phase, we can feel like we're right at getting our cost right around $18,840,000. Now, that doesn't mean that's where our budget is gonna end, we're gonna reestimate this project again after we get through the detailed design phase, so we're reestimating after each one of these phases, so that they know our budget is $18 million, and we're not going in to build any, not one penny over $18 million. So, we feel really good about where we're going in now. We'll come back to you after this detailed design phase where we have actually the details that they can estimate off and let you know where we are at that point, too. I will tell you that this design phase does cut 2,000 square feet off the project. So, instead of a 52,000 square feet project, we have a 50,000 square foot project. It's 1,000 square feet off the first floor and 1,000 square feet off the second floor. Most of that came in the staff space, so we took that off of staff and mechanical, which is what we have committed to the library board and to our community that we wanna make sure that we're giving as much as we can to the public space. So, that was very, it sounds like a lot, but not a whole lot, didn't really cut out anything that we were looking for in the project. Schedule-wise, we are, we're moving pretty quickly. This is kind of little. What I will tell you is that we are in the detailed design phase. That detailed design phase really takes us until May, and that's where we'll come back with sort of that final budget going out. This will be the final budget that we have before we go out to bids. They are planning and hoping that by fall, we can start that bidding process and that we might possibly be even to at least get some footings in the ground in late fall before winter, so that they could possibly work over winter. So, you'll see that that last, you may not be able to see it, 'cause it's so tiny, that last end date down there at the bottom for bidding and permitting is 11/20/2020, so that's this fall.
Question. Why is it so far out? Is it the fundraising that needs to occur to fill that gap?
Yes, ma'am.
And if you hit it earlier, are they prepared to start earlier, or are we still kinda married to this?
They are, depends on who you ask. The architect would like to take a little bit more time, the construction manager's ready to go.
Okay.
So, we're really trying to expedite this detailed design phase here over the next four to five months. As long as we can get the fundraising side of the money, at least, you know, over that big hump, we'll be ready to go earlier if we can.
Great.
So, everybody's ready, soon as we can go. We're still on track for March 2022 to be our opening of the library. We have not talked a lot about this publicly at this point, and so this is why I say this is kind of our coming-out party. The reason why is I wanted to make sure that we got through the funding waiting period. I wanted to make sure with this project, we've had a lot of stop-and-starts, and we wanna make sure that we're being good stewards of the message and we're not going out with something and then having to pull back, that kind of thing. So, from here on out, we're gonna, Katie bar the door, we're gonna start talking about this project. We hope to get a sign up in the lot that says future site. We're gonna have a website that's gonna have information. In a couple of weeks, we're gonna have renderings, different iterations of renderings up in the lobby of the library, we'll probably bring some over to City Hall. Whatever it is that would be helpful to you all, whatever we can do to support and get that message out, we're ready to start talking, we're ready to start sharing our plans with everyone, and we're so super excited and thankful for your support. Any other questions?
Yes, Ms. Serenad. I have a couple of questions. So, I'd like to get a rumor started.
Please.
Will we be able to put a third floor on it?
Oh, thank you. I love your rumors. So, I have a couple of rumors, but, so what I would tell folks that say, what are we gonna do with expansion? We don't ever wanna put a third floor on a building from an operational cost perspective. The more floors you have, the more people it takes to maintain it, to service it. What we would do is build out. So, we would add on to the back of the library, and that was intentional, that's the reason why we really put the library closest to Sixth Avenue as we can. We can build onto the back of the library if need be. So, yes, it is expandable, double in size, going back on that lot if we wanted to, we'd have to do something with parking, but that is our expansion goal.
Great, thank you.
Please start that rumor.
I, yeah, I still had to, I still had that conversation two weeks ago at the library, so it's funny how things are still circulating. My next question is, is, given your numbers and based on the circulations, I'm assuming that circulation is tabulated by something that's checked out, whether it's media, hard copy, audio, video. What do you think our increase will be? With like any new business or entity, you will see a rush of increase immediately?
Yes.
And then, it will taper back off, but where do you see, I see us needing to increase by 50% to be in competition with our city to the southwest of us, but hitting the number at that 600,000, where do you think that's gonna level off at by providing the services? That's gonna be a tangible checkout for circulation number? It appears that that's what we're being measured on from a national level, right? Or a state level?
Sure. I did, the other thing that we are measured on is the number of people that walk through our doors, because we have a lot of folks that come through the door that don't check out, right? And so, we do, that is a measure that we have kept up with as well. I would say that, I told Lana Scary number, that generally when libraries first open, the spike in traffic into the library is 100% increased, and it takes about three years for that to level out.
Wow.
Now, it's new, it's shiny, everybody's excited. So, I think that that doesn't necessarily correlate to circulation. I think that what I'm most curious about is the space usage. One of the things that we don't talk about enough, and I know that those of you that spend time in the library, our meeting spaces in the library right now are absolutely maxed out. I don't think we can ever, even a city the size of Cedar Rapids, there is never enough meeting space. And folks say, well, Hills Bank has the meeting space, but to have meeting space that's open from 8:00 in the morning until 9:00 at night almost every day of the week, that is where the week, that is where we're going to see our biggest increase. Cedar Rapids, when they opened, ended up having to hire an event staff because so many people wanted to rent the space. Now, the good part about that is the revenue that you generate after having those types of events pays for your event staff. So that's the area that I think that we're going to see the biggest increase is rentals. People are going to want to have weddings, they're going to want to have cocktail parties on a Friday night when there's something going on in Marion Square Park. Corporations are going to want to rent that primo space for their staff to have a party out there. So that's the area that I'm probably most caught, anxious about is just knowing how much the space is going to get used from a meeting standpoint. From a circulation perspective, I think we'll see a little bit of a blip for a couple of years, maybe a twenty percent increase, but I don't think that's, it's going to be more bodies in the building. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does, and that leads me to my next thing, because I, I've had, this week I probably talked to three different people about the library and explaining what libraries do today and how they're much different, and we slapped the label "library" on them and we think that we're checking out a book, and it's so much more than that, so it'll be exciting to see you go through this. To me, I feel like this is going to be kind of like the Fields of Dream, or Dream of Fields.
If you build it, they will come.
Yeah, and I, I think it, it just, some of these things that you're pointing out, like the kitchens and so forth as well, too, so kudos to you and your staff, and thanks for the presentation.
Thank you. I will say, here I went back to this floor, these little rooms on the bottom part of the, the children's area, to your point, I will almost guarantee you, we can have a little friendly wager. Those rooms will be one hundred percent booked every single day after school with tutors. So right now, we have three tutors that use the library, and it's horrific because they don't have a place that they can go in quietly and tutor students. Those rooms alone, you probably won't ever be able to get into it because we have so many children that are, that are being tutored at the library.
Well?
I'm excited.
I just want to say that this, these look great, and I saw these at the library board meeting, but I'm excited for it.
Thank you.
It's fantastic, and I do like the seventies look.
Okay. There's a real mix on that.
I do like that entrance. I think it looks good. But I will just, we all see it every, on Saturdays when we're up there at the library, that it's not just people coming in and checking out books, and there's, those rooms are getting used all the time. My neighbor, for the last two Saturdays I've been up there, she's been up there, and she goes up there to study for her masters.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, she uses the study rooms. Instead of doing it at home where there's kids, she's there in a quiet spot to study, so it's, I get used, it gets used a lot, lots more than just checking out a book.
Absolutely.
Great. Yes, Ms. Goodell.
Yeah, I just want to echo, thank you for all the hard work. This has been talked about for years. It's nice to see it finally happening, and, you know, people throw the word about deserving a lot, and I think sometimes that's a little, you know, we're talking about other people's money, it's, it's a hard one for me to swallow, but I think Marion totally deserves this, and I'm really excited for it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, at this time, I would like to move to approve Resolution Number two-eight-two-eight-five, approving the amendment to professional services agreement with Ingberg Anderson Architects regarding the Marion Public Library Building Project.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number two-eight-two-eight-five, approving the amendment to professional services agreement with Ingberg Anderson Architects regarding Marion Public Library Building Project Discussion. All those in favor of Resolution Number two-eight-two-eight-five, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion is approved. At this time, we have a public forum, which is time set aside for comments from the public on any topic that was not on tonight's agenda. Anyone who's here to address the council on anything, please come forward at this time. Okay, we will move on to council comments. Ms. Sturnad?
Nothing.
Will?
I send my condolences to the Draper family again. People may believe this, may not believe this, but I do. He visited me the other day and he said he's doing good, so. That's all.
Nothing.
Okay, so we've asked, in honor of Paul, we've asked Mayor Pro Tim Jensen to do a history lesson.
We all know Paul gave us history lessons all the time, and so I'm going to be doing a couple readings from the book Around the Park, Marion Merchants. This was put together by the Marion Historic Preservation Committee. I'll be talking about two projects that Paul was very involved in and absolutely essential and key to what happened, and those, the first one is talking about the Depot Pavilion. It says, "In nineteen eighty-seven, Paul Draper was becoming very concerned that a large part of Marion's history was going to disappear when the buildings, including the depot east of City Park, were demolished for the new shopping center. One day, he decided the most prominent part of the depot was the roof and thought it could be reused as a roof of a pavilion in the park. A shelter had been under discussion for several years, but funds had never been made available for one. Draper got support for his idea from the park board, a citizens advisory group, and the city council. Then he went about raising the money for the project. The architect for the project was to be Dave Martin of Design Consultants, a Marion architect. Draper also solicited volunteers for labor for salvaging some of the twenty thousand bricks and other materials from the depot before the wrecking ball dismantled the structure. When the roof was removed and placed in the park in early April nineteen eighty-eight, there was still a need to raise twenty-five thousand dollars for the project, and this was done. The pavilion was completed and dedicated in October nineteen eighty-eight, the result of Mr. Draper's vision. Can be seen on the south side of the city park today. The resulting pavilion follows the footprint of the original depot. It is a well-used reminder of Marion's railroad heritage." The second piece is talking about his insurance building. We all know that that is a very old building, I won't cover the entire history of the building, but let me cover a portion of when Paul got involved with that building. In nineteen seventy-six, the current, the current business, excuse me, in nineteen seventy-six, the current business Sheets Forest Draper Insurance Agency bought the building. Mr. J.O. Sheets and Paul Draper believed the building deserved some care and began its renovation and restoration. An article in the Cedar Rapids Gazette reports, "The woodwork was sandblasted because there were so many coats of varnish," said Mr. Sheets. "An old fireplace located in Mr. Sheets' office was restored. The surround is of brick-shaped mosaic tiles. The hearth tiles which matched the fireplace have been covered with flooring. A marble-top banister along the stairs to the second floor to one of the, is one of the features of the building. French doors to the agency's front room came from Mr. Sheets' uncle's house in Macocata, which was built in the eighteen fifties. The doors were being used for shelving when Mr. Sheets discovered them by accident. Two of the offices have been gaslights and were converted to electricity." This is interesting, so if all of you have been over there, in front of the, in front of their building, there is a large block of stone right towards the street. I've seen it many times, until now, I had no idea why it was there. So it says, "Notice, note the large stone mounting block on the street between the building and the one next door. This was used by people getting into and out of horse-drawn carriages. The carriages were much too high to just hop in, so steps of some type were needed." So that piece of stone has been there for a very long time. After the apartment on the second floor was vacated in the late nineteen nineties, the rooms were converted to offices. In the process of stripping away decades of old paper, wallpaper, the plaster walls revealed some interesting information. Written in pencil on the plaster was A.L. Starbuck Painter Wallpaper eighteen eighty-four. And below that was repapered nineteen oh-one by W.L. Rance. Evidently, everybody left their signature and name and date. And then, May twenty nineteen twenty-four, from that, we can assume Mrs. Davis had her house papered at least three times, and the first time was when the house was newly built. The remodeling of this former home into offices had been carefully and tastefully done. It is still possible to imagine a family living there today." Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. For my announcement section, March sixth is International Women's Day celebration in Marion. The Women's Equality Coalition puts on this luncheon every year. This year's speaker is Swati Dandikar. It's at, it's held at the Hills Bank Community Room. Encourage everyone to go. I've helped put that together for the last three years, and it's always a good program, hear a good speaker, and celebrate equality for women. So would encourage everyone to go and join me there. Monday, our youth council is featured in a Gazette article. That was a really great, great thing for those students, and I think they really enjoyed, enjoyed that, and that's been a really worthwhile project, and glad to see that they got recognized. Last Friday, I was at the Lynnmar High School judging the talent show for the Key, that the Key Club puts on as a, as a fundraiser, and on Monday, I was at Ramsey's, waiting on tables to raise money for the Marion Athletic Booster Club. And we had the ribbon cutting for DBAT. If you haven't been out there, it's a really amazing facility that offers a lot of great options for, for residents of the entire region, and I, that place is going to be very busy, I know, so check that place out. Another, another great amenity to offer people options. It was suggested to me that, that I read my comments from Paul Draper's funeral, so I'll do that and try to make it quick here, but I think it's fitting that we just honor So again, we offer our condolences to Paul's family on behalf of all the city, city council, the city staff, and all the residents, their losses, of loss for Marion. And I got to know Paul after joining the city council in twenty thirteen, and in that relatively short period of time, I grew to respect and appreciate so many things about him. Even though we were thirty-two years apart in age, we developed a close friendship, and I think because we had one main thing in common, our deep love for this community and our desire to see, see it prosper. Paul connected with many people around his love for Marion. It's hard to find a more staunch and stubbornly faithful supporter and a greater champion for our town than Paul Draper. He loved everything about Marion, its people and, and its history. Although surprising to many, he was not a Marion native, but he read all he could about the history and eagerly shared his knowledge. He always pushed to have Marion history taught in the schools and would jump at the opportunity to visit a classroom, share his stories, and instill pride in the young people. He ended each council meeting with Marion's history lesson for all who attended. Those ten or fifteen minutes, sometime twenty minutes, became a favorite part of our meetings, and we all looked forward to hearing what Paul had to say. I often called him the walking history book. Many people, and especially younger generations of leaders in our town, were drawn to Paul because he represented something significant to us. In a self-centered world where leaders are often driven by personal agendas and self-interest, Paul's love for his community and desire to make a positive impact shone brightly. As much as he was proud of Marion's history, he wasn't stuck in the past or even in the present. He had a forward-looking vision and advocated for growth and progress. This was inspiring to many people. At his age, it would have been understandable and maybe even expected, had he decided that he'd done enough and had paid his civic dues, but instead, Paul doubled down on his commitment to be a force for good in the community. He ignored his age. When he turned eighty, he proudly announced that it was only the thirtieth anniversary of his fiftieth birthday, and until the very end, he refused to let his health issues slow him down. He preferred to serve and promote Marion until his very last breath. What a great example for all of us. He wanted to do whatever he could to make sure that Marion would prosper long after his time here. In fact, he was most excited when he talked about what Marion would be ten and twenty years from now. Paul also understood his responsibility to the community. He was stubborn in his positions on many issues, as we all know, but he always realized that he was just one voice and the importance of doing what was in the interest of the greater good of the community. For me personally, he was a steadfast supporter, a source of encouragement, a critical ally in my wise counsel when I needed him. Being at the forefront of a lot of change can be a difficult position, and Paul always made sure I knew that I had his approval, his loyalty, his friendship, and his support, and I'll always be grateful for that. One incident in particular spoke volumes to me about Paul's character, and it was when I first became mayor in late twenty fifteen. For my family, this was an unexpectedly trying and stressful period. The heated atmosphere of the three-way election and its aftermath came as a bit of a shock for an immigrant family that had spent four decades assimilating and building a good name in the community. All on his own, Paul called my dad, reassured him, and told him not to worry, that everything would be okay, and in that moment, the simple act of empathy by a respected pillar of the community meant the world to my parents and to me. Someone once said, "The monument of a great man is not made of granite or marble or stone. It consists of his goodness, his deeds, his love, and his compassion." Paul certainly made his mark through his good deeds, his love, and his compassion. It would take too long to recount all of the lasting and positive ways in which he impacted our city. We owe him a great deal of gratitude, and we'll each have our own reminders of this wonderful man. We'll think of him when we pass by the Depot Pavilion or hear the mention of Waldo's Rock Park. We'll think of his funny stories about his early years or his fast cars. We'll smile when we see Carolyn, to whom he referred as his roommate of sixty years. And every time we're at the snug, we'll see him sitting in that first bar stool in the corner, drinking his toddy, as he called it, before heading home after council meetings. Everyone will have their own memories of Paul that will put smiles on their faces. I found out in the week after he passed away just how highly regarded Paul was by people outside of Marion. The comments and messages of condolences that I received from area leaders included descriptions such as "great ambassador" and "positive leader." Mayor Hens of Robbins wrote a note saying, "Paul Draper was Marion." It's a simple statement, yet so immense in its meaning. Paul was Marion, and for many of us, he always will be. Thank you for joining us tonight, and have a good week. We'll see you next time. Meetings adjourned.